All right, we are a little bit past six o'clock. We do have, so on our planned agenda this evening is to consider deliberations for our candidate for our new city administrator position. We do not have open forum on the agenda this evening, however, I'm happy to open the mic to anybody that would like to speak in an open forum session. We'll provide that opportunity if there is anyone that would like to speak in open forum before we bring discussion back to council. And not seeing anyone step forward. Jolene, are we online?
We are online and I don't see any participants. Okay. Can I show any participants that have raised their hands to speak at this time?
Okay. Very good. With that, we're going to, I'm going to toss it over to Bart. And Bart, the floor is yours.
Sure. You're going to toss it to me real quick?
Yes.
Amanda.
Telling up the scores.
Yes. So, just to recap where we have been, obviously, we had the interviews all day long, and then Bart asked council to provide him with their top one and top two choices, if they had a top two choice. And so, we're just going to go through those. I think we're going to try to put them up on the screen so you can just sort of see what the, you know, I think I'm visual, maybe if you're visual, it's helpful to just see what it is. So, you'll see, we'll go through top choices first, and then we'll go through second choice, unless council wants to do it differently. Does that work?
I think that's great.
Okay. So, we have one vote for Joe Ga.
You want this plugged in?
Yeah, sure.
Mayor, sorry, not to interrupt really quick. I just wanted to make one point of, one point. One of you only chose one person. They had just a top one, just so you know. So, that's why the votes will come out uneven.
Oh. With our technical issues right now, we're kind of it up.
That's fine. So, if you have a piece of paper in front of you, if you, if you want to, you can write GAA and he is one. So, Joe Ga has one vote for the top choice. Then we have, Joe Ga has a second for top choice. Joe Ga has a third vote for top choice. Joe Ga, Joe Ga, excuse me, has a fourth vote for the top choice. And then, we have one vote for Christina Hand for the first choice. Sorry, I'm just writing this down. So, I will pause here for one second. Obviously, Christina is not a part of the process. So, the, the first question is, you know, does council want to look at her along with these additional candidates, or do, do they want to consider her separately, or what, how would they like Christina to be considered with the candidate pool that you have right now?
Council, I'm open to feedback, thoughts?
She actually pulled out of the race and even put it in the paper that she wasn't going to run. It wasn't a good fit for her. That was, that was in the paper. Also, there was some paperwork that she didn't fill out like everybody else did, and so, I wasn't ever going to consider her for that. It's just my vote, one vote, for that reason.
Any other perspectives?
Yeah, I can appreciate council member Husnick's points on that. I think he's accurate. In terms of the process, at the same time, counterpoint would be that she's been on the job, doing, doing the work. And so, I think from that standpoint, I would advocate that we at least let her, you know, be a part of the conversation.
Other points of perspective?
So, I would agree. I think, you know, we were a little concerned from the beginning about this candidate pool. We, we were all, I think, in agreement of that. We did find, I think, it's dozens and department heads came forward with one person, which I think we, seemed like we might be in agreement with that. But to rule out someone that's been working here for six months, hit the ground running, has not just kept the lights on for the city, but is continuing to move things forward, working out and having hard conversations on difficult situations, I think we would be foolish not to at least consider her as, as, as the top two.
Council member Valente, anything to add?
I guess I'm not torn one way or the other, only because Joe has four out of the five votes, so.
I think we should consider all options on the table, and all options on the table is always, what is our current candidate pool, as well as what might not be our current candidate pool. And so, I'm, I'm open to having her part of this conversation. However, I do feel that, just based on the results I've seen so far, I think it's a little bit of a mute point. But I think as, I think we should all be working towards making the best decision, and I have respect for everyone's opinions up here. So, if there is some discussion points that we should have on Christina as a candidate, I think we should certainly entertain the discussion. But again, based on what I've just seen, it might not be a significant point. I will also just be fully transparent. I, I hope we're also going to look at the number two votes.
Yep.
And Christina was my number two, so I very much am in favor of that consideration, but let's see number two.
Okay. So, segueing to the second, second choice, one person did not provide a second choice, so just, there'll be four for this one. There, this person had Joe for number one and Christina for number two. This person had Joe for number one and Tariq for number two. This person had Joe for number one and Christina for number two. This person had Christina for number one and Joe for number two. So, just from a numbers perspective, Joe has four first-choice votes and one second-choice vote. Christina has one first-choice vote and two second-choice votes, and Tariq has one second-choice vote. So, those are the choices that you've made. One, one thing I do want to just make clear is, as of right now, I do not know if Christina is interested in this position, because as council member Husnick did mention, she did pull her name from consideration. So, if, if, if there is an interest in pursuing her as a candidate, obviously, she would need, she would need to weigh in on that and be allowed to, to either say, yes, she'd be willing to reconsider, or no, she is maintaining her position of not being interested.
Bart, go ahead.
Mayor, council members, just one other point of, I guess, order here. As far as the DDA and we are concerned, there is a two-year guarantee as part of our process that would be in place with any candidate that has gone through our process. That would not be in place with any candidate that has not gone through our process, just as a point of clarification.
So, at this point, I think it makes sense for there to be council discussion and/or, it doesn't look like we have anybody else in the public here in terms of open-mic night. Just discussing, there's really three candidates that you have on the board right now. You have Joe Ga, you have Christina Hand, and then you do have Tariq with one second-choice vote.
Council, what are, what do we thought, any thoughts that maybe haven't already been said, or comments?
So, I, you know, what I'd like to see at this point is that we table this until Monday evening. We have the conversation with Christina Hand to see if she is interested in the position, and then circle back on Monday and make a final decision. It allows us some extra time to, what I'd like to do is a little bit more of a deep dive on Mr. Ga. I think he could be a viable candidate. Obviously, he was my number two, and so, I just think that more time would allow us more time to explore a little bit more and do a deeper dive. This is a big decision. You know, we, we just met these individuals for the first time a number of hours ago. In the, in the private sector, you have second interviews, you have time, so the idea of making this decision, I'm just not comfortable making that this evening.
I, as I hear, as I hear that, I'm fully respectful of, let's take the time that's needed to make the right decision. I have a little bit of a hesitancy of opening up the pool of having that conversation. I mean, here we are in a public meeting, having the conversation. But extending, extending the invitation to Christina at this point, given just where we are, it just, it seems that we're sitting with the majority of the votes already sitting with Joe. It seems, it, it seems like Christina is not the primary choice, and so, I'm not sure. I guess maybe my, maybe my question would be, what happens next? So, we have the conversation, Christina, are you interested? Then what do we, what would we do next with that? Is it, what does that look like?
Well, I mean, if she's, is interested, then you try to do the vote, do a vote on Monday.
And, and so, would you, would you be looking for then, so would the instruction be that either our city attorney or Bart reach out, confirm a level of interest, just bring that information back to council for our consideration on Monday? Is that?
I think so. I mean, the fact that, that, you know, she has a number of votes here. We've seen her in action.
Correct.
Not perfect. No one is perfect. I just, EDA member made a, made a comment this evening about, you know, looking strongly at her. So, I know other public people have reached out to me and said, you know, you might have the right person in the seat right now. So...
I guess, do you feel that the only missing piece of information is knowing whether she's interested in the role? And if she is interested in the role, I guess, I just want to make sure that we're walking into Monday with enough information to be able to make a decision. Or if there's something else that's needed, I'd like to identify that, just so we're kind of clear on what that next step is.
Need from her, or just in general?
Yeah. If we're going to consider that, because there is, it sounds like there's a suggestion for a follow-up. And so, if we're going to have that follow-up, if the confirmation is, yes, I'm open to being considered, is that enough? You know, there hasn't been a community interview. Council, we haven't interviewed, but I personally don't feel like I need to. I just want to make sure that there's kind of a clear sequence in what that looks like.
I guess I got to ask, what's the point of this whole process? We just went through this whole process after she declared she'd pulled out, and now we're going to go back? I don't get it.
Well, I think, you know, it's this thing through, speaking of the process, I mean, we, she's been in the seat for six months, so from a community interview standpoint, I mean, she's had, I think we've probably all gotten a lot of communication that, you know, there's a high level of appreciation. You know, we all stepped back from the fast track because we recognize that it's, you know, this next decision is a big one.
Right.
And we wanted to have a comparative pool, to my recollection, which I feel like that's what this process has given us, is that comparative pool. In my mind, I guess it didn't necessarily rule her out because she's been doing the job, and that's why she's, who's on my slip as well. And so, I don't think it hurts us to take the time just to, just to confirm one way or the other. I mean, if she, you know, if we ask Amanda to follow up with her, and she's just an absolute hard no, well, that makes it really, really simple. But if that's not the case, then it, you know, then it merits discussion.
One, thank you for all of this discussion. I think it is important to kind of put on the public record. We did hear, we did hear feedback back from both our department heads, as well as the community panel. The department head panel recognized Joe Ga as their primary candidate and felt strongly enough that the second candidate wasn't necessarily identified. And then, the community panel had identified Tariq as a top candidate with both Devon Swanberg and...
Joe.
Joe, as their, as their second candidates. As I walked, as I walked in, before hearing, and then we did also hear from a member of our EDN who led the community panel, personally, he had also represented and indicated some support for Christina in that role. As I walked into this discussion and into this consideration, that overwhelming feedback for Joe, and that, not unanimous, but virtually, we've got all of our identified people in the room identifying the same person, maybe in different ranks, but that one person has risen up across the board. To me, that speaks volumes, and I'm open to considering Christina should she's, if she's interested on Monday, as a point of reference. But I'm, I just want to be transparent. I'm not sure it changes my mind, given the level of consensus that we've seen. And I guess, I'm just compelled to say that, say those words out loud, that we've had that, you know, we, we have a candidate who has risen to the top and want to give this decision time, and certainly, people can, you know, make some additional conversations and have some additional time to consider, but we are at a much tighter consensus than what I was expecting walking into this decision. And although Christina, I put Christina as a number two, to me, there's a greater distance between my number one and my number two, just because of what I've heard tonight. And so, I just want to be transparent in my thought process and also kind of, just kind of indicate how I'm seeing that seems like we do have some consensus, so.
Points of feedback?
So, just on, on Mr. Ga, I, again, I think he is a qualified candidate. You know, four months at a previous job, and it wasn't the right fit, that's concerning. I confirmed with the mayor down there, that was his term, it wasn't the right fit. This needs to be the right fit.
I agree.
So, to take the time to make sure this is the right fit is, is important. The department heads had concerns about Mr. Swanberg, who was trying, would have to relearn some of the state codes and different statutes from when he used to work in Minnesota, then he was in Wisconsin just for 18 months, and that concern, but didn't seem to be a concern about Mr. Ga coming from Iowa, who's never been in Minnesota. So, that, you know, that seems a little odd. I mean, so if we're worried about one candidate about that, who, who actually worked in Minnesota, and now we're not worried about Mr. Ga, that doesn't, just doesn't make sense.
Does anyone see a need to meet tomorrow? We do have a meeting on the calendar for nine o'clock in the morning. I'm happy to keep that if there's, if there's time, if there's a need for it. Sounds like there is some desire to extend until Monday, and I'm happy to support that as well.
Yeah, given that we're already scheduled to meet on Monday, I guess I'd prefer to just wrap it up into that, if that's good to think of.
Yeah, I don't care.
Okay. We had an opportunity, we had an opportunity for some discussion today, and I said the words then, and I'll say them again out loud today, that I would ask that, if we are gathering information, and I suspect we will all spend some time on the Googles and doing some, doing some things over the weekend, that information, let's share that as a full council in our meeting on Monday. I think that it's important that whatever information is learned is known by everybody, especially if we're at this point of making a decision. So, I would just ask for that kind of professional respect to the process.
Can I ask a point of clarification? Please. So, I work with Christina almost every, every day. I'm talking with Christina, and certainly, you know, she and I have had personal conversations around whether or not she would consider being here permanently. I have, I have enjoyed working with her. What I'm, I guess what I'm looking for from council is, do you want a definitive, yes, she is interested, interested in the position right now, or a, she may consider the position in the future? And the reason that I'm asking that question, and I have asked her if it would be okay, you know, if I shared this information, so I'm not, I'm not sharing something that I shouldn't be sharing, but it has sounded like in the past, when we've talked about it, she's kind of said, you know, maybe later on, but she wouldn't be interested in entertaining permanent employment with Forest Lake right now. When I speak with her, which I'm assuming is what you want me to do between now and Monday, what exactly do you want, you know, I will try to pin her down on an answer, but what do you want, what information do you want? And frankly, she'll be here Monday night. You can ask her yourself, and maybe that's easier, but I'd like to be able to, you know, get you the information as soon as I, I can, so you have that information. But what do you, what specifically do you want me to ask her?
Thank you for teasing that out, because she is currently serving in a, in an interim role, and conceivably, there's a number of ways that she could continue to serve. At risk of just jumping ahead with my opinion, I'm going to just jump ahead with my opinion, and I invite disagreement. Because we have a candidate that has a fair amount of consensus that is available, literally to start as soon as we make a decision, I think, from my perspective, I would be looking for a permanent position. I'm, I'm not interested in continuing into an interim role or a longer interim role. We have an opportunity now to, with a qualified candidate that has consensus, enter into a permanent position. We absolutely need this position to be filled permanently as soon as possible. If we would have walked in today with that door being a little fuzzy, I would have been open to a longer-term interim position with Christina, just again, because I think she's doing a good job in that role. But to me, based on what's transpired today, we have an opportunity for permanent, literally almost on Monday, if we were to make that decision, and I think we should.
I would agree. She, she needs to, you know, commit to that, a permanent position.
Okay. So, it would be within the next 15, right. Oh, well, she's, she's ours, so it's not like she has to give us notice to continue to work for us. So, it would be the same. Okay. That is incredibly helpful.
Are we giving Amanda direction to have this conversation and to bring back information to council for Monday? I feel like we are, just want us to have consensus, and certainly, Amanda, I want you to feel like you have a clear direction from us.
Yeah. I mean, we want to find out if she is, you know, should we get to that point, if she is even willing to entertain the idea of immediate permanent employment, right? That's what we just decided. But, I mean, it's going to be possible to, what's your timeline?
To talk with her? Oh, I want to be calling her in 10 minutes. Let's be real. So, I, I don't know if she's going to pick up her phone, but, you know, I mean, I'll be texting her shortly. In terms of additional information that you would want from Christina, do you want her compensation and all of those sorts of, that, that information? Because that was initially part of the conversation with her. When it was, when, when council moved to the sort of shortened version, there was a couple of different factors that were going on. One of them was her discomfort with the release form that DDA was requiring her to sign. The second was that it appeared council and Christina were not together on compensation. So, I'm wondering if it's more than just a, she would need to say, yes, she could start permanently now, do you also want to know what her asks are?
I, I don't need that now, because we're not asking Mr. Ga for that at this point.
Well, but Mr. Ga knows what our stated range is. Mr. Ga knows the range for the role that he's interviewed for. We need it, we need it sooner rather than later. I would, I mean, personally, yes. This is a negotiated number. I don't want to sit in a public meeting and start to negotiate that number, but I feel like we at least need a baseline, because again, other candidates already have the baseline, given the advertised range.
Conversely, it could be...
So, maybe with that same level of certainty, right?
And conversely, it can be simply that, you know, I can relate to her. The compensation is what we had talked about prior, it is what is advertised, there isn't some sort of different compensation for her. I mean, I can go either way, right? I can ask her for hers, or I can say, by the way, if this changes your answer, the compensation is what is advertised.
I think both is true. I think she knows, she knows our advertised range, and it would be good to know sooner rather than later, if that is, if she's amenable to that. And, you know, that information's going to come back. Again, I don't want, in this meeting, to get into the negotiation of that.
Okay.
Bart?
Mayor, one other point of clarification, and I guess, Amanda, were you, are you, I don't want to jump to this next thing if you need a little more information.
No. If there, well, are you asking for more information than I should be gathering?
No.
Oh, okay.
So, it's clear to me, I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm doing the right thing tonight, because I did say that I would contact the, the candidates tonight. So, it's clear to me that four, at least for sure, four of them, I'm basically saying, thank you very much for your time, but not, you know, you were not a chosen person. And then, we have Tariq, who was kind of on the bubble, you might say, and then you have Joe. So, what should my message be to Tariq? Does he fall into the group that's the no? Or, and then, I mean, Joe, I can just say that, you know, there, you know, there'll be a decision on Monday, so.
So, this is a broadcast meeting, the information, I guess, I would be hesitant to jump to a conclusion beyond where we are tonight. And where we are tonight is, we know we have a candidate who, a candidate that participated today, we have two candidates that participated today that ranked in the one and two. And we have invited our current administrator to, we're going to have a conversation if there is a desire to be considered, and then council will reconvene on this topic on Monday. I'm really uncomfortable with telling any candidate that they are not further considered, because to me, this isn't done until it's done. And I'm not trying to, you know, slip in another candidate, you know, but it's, we're not done until we're done, so let's not conclude until we're concluded.
I would agree. I don't know why the direction would have been to tell them tonight, when we already had a meeting scheduled for, for Friday, and we've talked about maybe continuing this till Monday. So, I don't know why that expectation was set.
You can certainly give them an update on what has happened tonight, but let's not go, let's not conclude beyond where we've concluded.
Yeah, I would like to keep all options until the last, to your point, to a decision actually.
And I can, and I can communicate that. I didn't know if, if the four that did not get any votes, if you wanted me to just take them off the table, but clearly not. I will just communicate to them that a decision will be made on, or it is likely a decision will be made on Monday.
Yes. And also, and part of this is because I look at this candidate, I look at this as, we're not done with this process until, not only we've made an offer, but we also have an accepted offer. And we, we know that there are, you know, there's other positions, and it's not always a successful negotiation, and so, I don't want us to close any doors. We, we've had a, we've had a, we haven't said this a lot, we've had a great day of interviews. And so, let's not kick any of those candidates loose until we're at the end of the process, and we're just not there yet.
Thank you.
Any other, okay.
Is there any additional information you would like from Christina? Would you like me to just let her know that you want her to be available on Monday for the meeting? Is it awkward if she's in that meeting? Is there, are you thinking, you, do you want this as a special meeting on Monday, or do you want this to just be added to the regular agenda?
It sounds, it's a light, it's a light agenda, so probably, I don't think we have to do a special meeting, but if, I guess if we don't want her part of that, maybe then it does have to be a special meeting.
Well, I'm just thinking if it's seven, then you're going to have all the people here who would be here for the seven o'clock meeting, if it's something that you're thinking you would be doing, I don't know, at six o'clock or five o'clock, or whatever that might look like. Hypothetically, you may have less people in the room. I don't know if that changes anything. But then, yeah, then secondarily, do you, I mean, is it a conversation where you would like her to be here for it? Is it a conversation where you would not like her to be here for it? I think she would do whatever you asked.
Personally, I think this is part of the awkwardness that we have of just the nature of inviting our current interim to be part of the process. We have a regular agenda meeting, we have a regular meeting on Monday. I don't see a reason to call a special meeting specific for this topic. It is a lighter agenda, there's nothing that is con- There's nothing that is conflicting or would cause some awkwardness of different audiences. And again, it's an open meeting. So my recommendation is we put it at the top of the agenda on Monday. It is the first thing that we address. Christina is open to be there, just like any other candidate would be open to be here as part of an open meeting. And I have full confidence, she is a professional. She knows exactly the process. She knows, you know, as much as anybody knows the process. And we'll make that decision and continue with the rest of our meeting, and I have confidence in her ability to support that well. Now, I guess I would say, if that is uncomfortable for her, I'm open to considering a special meeting. I just can't imagine that's going to be the case.
I genuinely don't know.
Maybe find that out, if she would prefer we do it as part of a special meeting, or, you know, if she's okay with it on the.
If that is her preference, let's notice a 6:30 special meeting, and then we'll have a seven o'clock regular meeting.
Okay.
And we're Thursday, so we have a date. Yes, we have time to still get that noticed.
It'll just, yeah, if it's a special meeting, yes.
Can I just confirm, Mayor? We are canceling the special meeting tomorrow, correct?
Okay, so what I have that you would like back from Christina is, is she interested in the permanent position? It would be starting now, not in some future unknown date. And then the salary range that is posted is the salary range that is available. And then confirm if she wants a special meeting, or if she's comfortable with this being at the beginning of the regular agenda on Monday. Is there anything else that you want? I don't have a magic ball to know what you guys should do, so it can't be that.
One of my questions is, how is this information coming back to us? How are we, how are we getting that response? And so.
And communication's a two-way street, so we don't necessarily know her timeline, but let's.
Correct.
What are your thoughts?
Right, so I can bring the information to you on Monday and have it at the Monday meeting. I can also send you an email. You cannot reply, obviously, because that's where we get into the closed-meeting law issue, but I can send you the one-way communication. So I can send you communication, you know, letting you know if she is interested or if she is not interested. So once I know that answer, again, that could be tonight or tomorrow morning. So you would have that information to know, I guess, what you want to sort of chew on over the weekend.
If she's not, do we do the special meeting to finalize this, or do we finalize this at the seven o'clock? Should we just plan to do a 6:30?
I think we should just plan on doing a 6:30.
Okay.
Jolene just had a really great suggestion. Do we want, do we want a recess for like five minutes, and I can make a phone call and we can come back?
No.
No?
I'd prefer not.
Got it. I mean, it's a terrible suggestion. I don't know why she won't suggest it. Jolene, that's awful.
It's good, I just, I prefer Monday. I just.
I have, so I have a question, though. I'm okay, I'm okay supporting the weakened consideration before a final vote, but if we can know in 10 minutes this response, I want to also leave room, this, communication's two ways, right? I also want to leave room for, actually, as I think about this, it might be a fast answer for Christina, it also may not be. And so for professional respect, this is her job.
Put her on the spot.
Let's not put her on a spot where council is in an open meeting, waiting for your response. I do like the expedited option. It may be a fast answer, but let's see if it may not be. Let's give it at least an overnight. It'd be love, if there is an answer that we could have tomorrow, I would welcome hearing that from you, Amanda, as soon as you have it.
Okay.
Also recognizing that is a one-way communication to us. It would be good to know just as soon as possible, really, what our path looks like, as soon as possible. But let's not put her in the position of literally on YouTube, waiting for a response.
Fair.
It does make for good TV, but. Any other logistics? Bart, you're clear on next steps with communication? I guess also, we've had a great day of, just a great day of interviews. So thank you for coordination, staff. This is, I know, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of coordination and effort, so thank you for getting here. We had great candidates travel from, you know, hundreds of miles to come here today to spend the time in Forest Lake. Just thank you to all of them for the great participation, because we really have had a great day, so. And look forward to our next discussion. So we are canceling our special meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow. We will decide tomorrow whether that is a meeting at 6:30 or, I'm sorry, we did decide, we are meeting at 6:30 in a special meeting to reconvene this decision. Tonight, do we, do we table, or do we recess and not adjourn?
We did decide that we're, we did decide that we're doing a special meeting on Monday. I thought we were going to let Christina make that decision.
No, we just, we decided.
I think we decided either way, we're going to meet at 6:30.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I must have missed that.
I did too.
Okay.
We were probably less than clear.
Different subject, do we leave all this here then, for you, Bart?
Yes, yes, if you could, either leave it there, and I'll just collect it. If you leave it at your spots, please, thank you very much.
And are we, so do we recess, or do we adjourn?
We can adjourn.
We can adjourn, okay. There being no further discussion topics for council to consider this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
Sure.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.